Now would be the time for that discussion, to the extent the council is comfortable with those discussions, then a vote could be taken, the second reading vote could be taken.
Discussion, council.
Madam Mayor.
Alderman Brashaw.
I am very happy with the suggestion of appointees. And I know this really doesn't cover this, but when are they looking forward to having their first meeting?
That would probably be at the call of the chair and the vice chair to determine, you know, what, when the availability is, but I would imagine it would happen in short order, depending on schedules.
Okay, thank you.
And most likely, Alderman Brashaw will be prior to our normal council meetings, so that way there's not an extra day.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Anything else, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the passage of ordinance 2020-18?
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The ordinance passes seven to zero.
Next is item number four, which is executive session. Madam Clerk, could you please read that?
Pursuant to five ILCS 120/2C1, the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee or against legal counsel for the public body, to determine its validity.
Thank you. Is there a motion to enter into executive session?
So moved.
Seconded.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Ross. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
The waiver and the release agreement for Lowell Crowe, Attorney Zito.
Unless there are any further questions, my counsel, we'll just be looking for a motion to approve the waiver and release agreement in a second.
I would like to make that motion, Mayor.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made by Alderman Brashaw, seconded by Alderman Mysick. Is there any further discussion, council? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, could you please take the role in the approval?
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Aye.
Berberay.
Aye.
McLanathan.
Aye.
Ross.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
And Busker.
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
And then item number six is public comment concerning the special meeting. Is there any public comments? Seeing none, we have item number seven, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion made by Alderman Busker, seconded by Alderman Mysick. All those in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes. So we will right away move into the committee of the whole meeting. And since it's now after six o'clock, Linda, would you please give the invocation?
As power heads, dear holy and righteous Father, who is full of mercy and grace, I thank you for this community and those that have appointed, you've appointed here to govern its affairs. I thank you that those are here are all in one as they trust in God to provide sound municipal leadership and efficient and high-quality services that enhance the safety, economic prosperity, quality of life, and public health of our community. Father, may the leaders here and the people in our community respond to rebuilding this community in the same way the people in Nehemiah's Day responded as he presented it to them, rebuilding the wall around Jerusalem in Nehemiah two and four. They said, "Let us rise up and build and strengthen their hands to do the work." The wall was built because the people had the mind and the heart to work. Father, let this mind and heart be in each one of us as citizens of this community. Let us be of one mind and one heart. I declare that those gathered here, along with the people of this community, through the direction and strength of the Lord, will build the old ways. They shall raise up the former desolation places in the city that were prosperous and full of life. They shall be prosperous and full of life again. They shall repair this city and the desolations of many generations, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Linda. It is six ten. We'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting. Madam Clerk, could you please take the role?
Mayor Miller.
Here.
Alder Person's McLanathan.
Here.
Ross.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Busker.
Here.
Brashaw.
Aye.
Mysick.
Here.
And Berberay.
Here.
All right, and item number three is the Pledge of Allegiance led by Alderman Busker. If you could please stand and join us. And Alderman Busker, it's your meeting.
Item number four is approval of the agenda. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Either one.
All right, we'll give the first to Alderman McLanathan, seconded by Alderman Ross. All in favor, saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Item number five is the approval of the minutes from the committee of the whole on February tenth. Is there a motion for that?
So moved.
Seconded.
All right. Motion by Parker, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carried. All right. Public comment, we have one signed in here, Bernie Magala. Just a reminder, you have thirty minutes.
Just a little bit in continuation of what before. I think what we need is a leader that's going to tell us what we do not want to hear. I think Mr. Busker has made a point of bringing this ordinance to place to fund police and fire pensions to two hundred fifty-five million dollars. I think that will be a total mistake if we do and pay the pensions in full at one point in time, because I think we'll end up with this market volatility, losing lots of well-earned dollars. I am in favor of funding those pensions to some degree, but I think we've got to be a little bit more creative than just offering a single bond issue. I think it needs to be dual-purpose. I think we need to fix our roads along with fixing the pension issues. I live in a... I live in an area of Freeport where the LMI is in the sixty-two percentile. I just pay three hundred and three dollars a year in property taxes, and that really does not make me very happy. And this low amount is a reflection of the value of our property created by the disinvestment of infrastructure and housing. In fact, our home, like many homes in the area, was less than what we had paid, except for those who acquired their property in the first half of the last century. This devaluation means only one thing, that the homeowners west of Park Street will be paying the majority of the fifty-five dollar loan through property taxes, and they'll have nothing to show for it. I guess my point is I'd like to see a total budget, total exposure, and be able to analyze everything that's ongoing, rather than just pass this ordinance and take care of one issue and create another problem down the road. Having said that, my biggest dissatisfaction is my value of my property is not where I think it should be, and it's because of where I live. Two garages have fallen down. One more garage is falling down, two more have holes in them, and if you live in my area and you look around, you wouldn't want to live there. And I think the village or the city at this point in time has to look at landlord-tenant legislation and occupancy to make sure that property values are maintained. And then, you know, at this point in time, I would have five dollars a year is what your raise would give me. Some people would be twenty-two, and others would be over a hundred dollars, and I think that would be unfair from my perspective. I can afford more. Having said that, thank you for your time, and I hopefully you'd consider solving a lot of problems instead of just piecemealing the thing. Okay? Thank you.
That was our only public account. Moving on to item number seven, the Housing Authority Monthly Report by Director Jasmine Varner.
Thank you. I first want to thank you all for allowing me the opportunity to present to you all on a monthly basis. The one thing that's very important about this recovery agreement is that we want to keep you all informed. We want you to understand the progress that we are making. We don't want the ultimate focus to be on the issues that brought us to where we are right now. HUD has been very supportive. We have in place what we call our recovery team that's made up of our financial analysts with HUD, our portfolio manager, as well as the engineer, and then on our side, myself, our director of operations, as well as our director of facilities and maintenance. So I do understand that on the monthly basis, you all will expect a written report in advance, and I will provide that to you this time around. I provided an outline of a few things that I did want to discuss with you. I did bring packets of information for you all to review, and the first thing that you'll see in your packet is the updated work plan agreement. Now, the difference between this work plan agreement and what you all originally received is the fact that HUD has provided, HUD headquarters in Washington, D.C., wanted this to be a monitoring process. They wanted the recovery team to work with the housing authority to establish goals. They wanted to make certain that this particular work plan establishes hard deadlines as opposed to flexible timelines. So the goals and objectives have not changed within the work plan, but as opposed to seeing, for instance, if it's related to reporting rent collections, what you'll see is that that monitoring process will happen on a quarterly basis, sometimes on a monthly basis, but it spans throughout the entire fiscal year. So we meet with HUD on a weekly basis to go over the work plan. I present to the board on a monthly basis, and I would really appreciate it if you all ever have time to join us in our board meeting. Please do, and you'll receive a pretty extensive PowerPoint presentation. And if you have any questions, please let me know, because again, the goals have not changed, but we do have a hard deadline in terms of our monitoring, our reporting, and this is ultimately, the ultimate goal is that this implementation process is secure. It's not a matter of just meeting specific tasks in order to move beyond. It's to make certain that this is sustainable within the Public Housing Authority. The other thing that you'll find in your packet is related to training. The last time I spoke with you all, I noticed that there was a lot of interest in how are we going to get our commissioners trained? I mentioned one particular training called Lead the Way, and this is something that is offered through HUD. It's not a one-time thing. It's a six-hour series of video vignettes, workshops, case studies, that really give commissioners an opportunity to have a better understanding of what it means to provide the fundamentals of oversight, the roles and responsibilities of commissioners, as well as the roles and responsibilities of staff. And then also, there are modules that focus specifically on key components of public housing when it comes to making decisions as a commissioner. So whether it's through finance or budgeting, ethics, assessment, this is what this training provides. We've had four of six of our commissioners that have already completed the training. We are working on the revised bylaws, which will be submitted to the Board of Commissioners by May, the May meeting for approval, and these bylaws will be based on a scope that's provided by Lead the Way. What you'll also find in the packet is you'll see an approved, board-approved agenda for the commissioners' retreat. This is a training retreat. The focus of this retreat is going to be on repositioning public housing. So ultimately, commissioners, we will bring in a professional, whether it's from HUD or another public housing, affordable housing consultant, that will focus on the decision-making process when a board looks at repositioning strategy. So whether it's RAD or voluntary conversion, the board will receive the tools that they need to be able to make a responsible decision in terms of what we will decide to do with the Westview and Willow Apartments. The last thing that you'll also find in the packet that I'll leave with you is an update for Parkside Demolition. We have sent out draft, a draft timeline, along with some additional information, some Q and A-type information for the residents who've had questions about relocation. But a few things that I want you all to focus on when you look at that draft timeline is, number one, when we are expecting that demolition application to be submitted to HUD by three nineteen. There's a few things that we're waiting on. We're waiting on HUD to complete their final assessment, as well as we did have to do an extended assessment of our garden-style apartments on Parkside. So that application is due on three nineteen. We anticipate HUD approving the demolition application for Parkside on fourteen. Normally, and I may have mentioned this to you before, this would be a twenty-four-week process, but given the nature of this application and the location of the apartments, this is going to be an expedited process, but still requires the application to be completed and reviewed by HUD. On four thirteen, we expect to be submitting the tenant relocation vouchers, and the expectation is approval of those vouchers will be around six twelve of this year. And from that point, once we receive approval, we anticipate that it may take residents about six to nine months to find eligible housing with their relocation voucher. So as we move forward, when we provide you with your monthly update, and again, your written monthly update, we want to make certain that you have an understanding of where we are with our finances. I don't know if you all recall the fact that a lot of public housing agencies have fee accountants, and the purpose of the fee accountant is because we need that expert knowledge to be able to keep us in compliance with HUD regulations and requirements. So our fee accountant is Jet Bangbridge. They work with many public housing authorities, and they're out of Indiana. They have gotten us caught up on our monthly financial reports. The reports are, I think, adequate as well, well, they're actually absolutely fantastic. They have brought us to a point of really understanding the financial aspect of public housing and what we're dealing with and what we're looking at moving forward. We're also in the process of completing our fiscal year 2021 budget, which we will hold not only a regular board meeting, but a special board meeting to seek approval for that budget by April first. And they also just finished our operating subsidy, which is based on our occupancy and what we'll be eligible for in terms of subsidies in 2021. In addition to that, in terms of management, you will also receive a quarterly update on our repayment agreements that we have with residents. We do try to give residents an opportunity, if they are having some hard times, to be able to make arrangements with us. We'll give you updates on evictions, as well as the ratios that we look at. So we look at what's called a MNR, our debt ratio, as well as our, let me find it, our MNR debt ratio, and one other ratio that right now, at the end of our fiscal year, which is three thirty-one, the fee accountant will be running those numbers so that we'll have an example of what we'll be looking at for fiscal year end. Soon, we'll be able to provide you with a summary of the physical needs assessment for the Westview Apartments. I've mentioned to you before that there is a lot of work required for that particular area. We will be looking at getting some roof work done, but there are other things that we do need a professional to come in and let us know what are the priority things that need to take place and what is the timeframe that it needs to happen in. So again, we do appreciate you allowing us the time to keep you updated, and if you have any questions when you receive your reports, if you feel like you need additional information, please let me know, because we want you to be fully informed. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. We really appreciate you bringing us these updates. I've learned a lot the past couple meetings that you've been here. You know, we never really knew much about the housing authority, so I'll open up, if anyone's got any questions for the Director at this point, I'll open up to any of the council members.
Chair.
Alderman McLanathan.
Thank you. Thank you, Director, for being here. I appreciate it. I appreciate you indicating one of the monthly written reports. Thank you very much. That's very helpful, especially as we've been tasked, you know, with our oversight role well on the board, so thank you very much. You covered a lot of the areas that I was kind of wondering about, so I'll take a look at the packet when, I guess, when we get them here at the end of the meeting. Couple questions, I just had the one particular to the Westview. When you're talking about the physical needs assessment, were you talking about those structures, I don't know, like fifteen or eighteen or so with the significant structural issues?
Yes. In order for us to be able to take those eighteen structures, those three buildings offline, we need to complete the physical needs assessment. You know, it's already determined that they're on sinking foundations, but HUD needs that actual paperwork in hand for them to know that, okay, these aren't salvageable at all. And then that also allows us the opportunity to decide what to do with that space. It's pretty obvious that with other tests that have occurred in the past, it wouldn't make any sense to rebuild on that particular space. We may be looking at more green space, a playground, something that'll be beneficial for the residents, but more likely will end up being green.
Follow-up, Chair? In your reports to us, are you going to kind of provide updates as to how things are going on, like the tenant file reviews, the vacancy rates, any issues regarding errors in prior assessed rent, things of that nature? Could we expect to see that covered?
Yes, you can expect to see that covered, and I think that it would also be helpful for you all to have an idea of how our staff is trained to calculate rents, the work that's being put in to monitor and audit the files, and even when it comes down to regular inspections of the units, and how we prepare for individuals who are moving out of their units to ensure that they receive their deposits back, being able to train them in the task that they can do to improve the apartment as much as they possibly can in order to receive their deposits back. And that's one of the greatest challenges that we've had in terms of unit turn. We've had units that have been trashed because the focus is not on receiving the deposits, and that has to be on the staff to ensure that we promote, you know, the extra work being put in when a person moves out.
Final follow-up? Thank you. And if I heard you correctly, you said the upcoming retreat is a retreat for training purposes with a focus on repositioning public housing. You're going to have some sort of consultant from HUD that's going to be helping focus some of the training and kind of brainstorming, I guess, moving forward. Would that be an accurate summary as to what can be expected out of that retreat?
Yeah, we're looking at this retreat to be something that's interactive for the commissioners, and my goal is that part of the retreat will even be able to bring in some of the managers to provide some insight and education. That's one of the things that came up with as we did our analysis of the first RAD. You know, how could we have moved forward a little bit better by utilizing the skillset and the information, the education of staff that were already on site? So we want to include our maintenance professionals, as well as our management professionals, when we do this training. Now, right now, we'll send out a request for qualifications. I don't necessarily know if it'll be someone from HUD. It may be a consultant from elsewhere, but we do know that it'll be someone who works with public housing when it comes to making decisions about repositioning.
Thank you, Director, and thank you for your reports.
Sure. Chair.
Alderman, Alder Person Brasshaw.
Thank you. Director Jameson Varner, I too want to thank you for the extra work you put into all of this. I realize in some ways it's not a proud position you have as a Director of Housing Authority, but it is an honored profession to be in your shoes and to have so much digression and problematic situations come forward, even before you became the Director. It must have been very difficult to step into your position. I do want to say that this is the first I've ever heard of a Director of Housing Authority in the city of Freeport put their commissioners through a six-hour series of training, and I'm really glad to know that you had, well, the insight and the oversight to do that. The HUD program, Lead the Way, sounds great, and you said four of the six have completed it. Do you have the other two scheduled to obtain this training as well?
Yes, they can actually do the training on their own, and what we do is, once the training is completed, they'll submit to us the confirmation, and they'll receive a wonderful certificate for doing so. But what's also great about this training, this Lead the Way, is that you can always go back if it's something that you don't get, or if there's something going on within the Housing Authority that, you know, that video you watched caught your attention, you can always go back. And in addition to the Lead the Way training and then other upcoming small workshops that we're having, you know, our goal is to also be able to, when it's affordable, to send commissioners, at least one commissioner a year, to one of the national HUD, NARO, FEDA trainings, so they can come back and do the train-the-trainer kind of thing. And what's important about that is... And what's important about that is, is that they'll be able to connect with other commissioners. They'll be able to tell stories. They'll learn more about how different public housing authorities operate and decision-making when it turns, when it comes down to whether it's staffing or repositioning, or in increasing vacancies, increasing rent collection. So this is, the one thing about public housing is that you have to be a part of the public. You have to connect with others, and that's what we want to see happen with our commissioners, as well as the staff.
Thank you. Madam Mayor, may I have one more?
Sure.
Oh, excuse me. Chairman.
Yes.
Please forgive me, I forget who I'm talking to here. You did make a comment about the application due to HUD. I'm assuming that's regarding the demo only of Parkside. Is that correct? And may I follow up on that? Thank you. And you mentioned a couple of due dates and demo-approved date by HUD. Now, my question is this, with even these approved, who is going to pay for this? Is this through a grant program, through HUD, or is the federal government gonna pay for it? Who's expected to tear those units down? Because there are a lot of them over there.
Yeah, there will be, we are able to use some of our capital funds for the demolition process, and that's another reason why we're completing this final assessment, so that we can have a cost analysis. But much of this will be from our 2017 grant, some will come from the 2018 grant. The application for tenant relocation vouchers, that will be dollars from the federal government.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all I have.
Any other questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving right along to topic number eight, discussion regarding funding of police and fire pensions. Kevin McCannon, Spear Financial.
Good evening. I think the topic was supposed to be that we go through the proposed bond ordinance. Because I think, I suppose the first thing, though, is are there any other questions? I mean, we went through this last week and a couple weeks ago. Does anyone have any other discussion about the topic, the idea of the bond issue, or do you wanna go right into the bond ordinance, which is what your bond council prepared, that if you passed at a future meeting, would authorize proceeding with this?
I'll open up.
Have you seen enough charts?
Chair. The only thing I would ask on that is, I assume it was in response to the last couple weeks in regards to the market, but I saw a higher projected issuance in regards to that. So I would, obviously not tonight, but like to see how that would affect, you know, those charts going forward. Because we were operating under a 48 million, and then there was, it was up to 55 on there, which I imagine could have a substantial difference.
Sure. Well, then let's go right into the bond ordinance. I don't think you really wanna go page by page, so let me just hit the highlights of it. Yes, it's authorizing $55 million. We were talking about 48. On the way out, we started talking to your actuary, Bob, who was here last time. He said the numbers that were being used to generate the 48 were not the latest numbers that, apparently, at the end of March, you will have later numbers. He thought they would be a couple million dollars higher. And you wanna make sure that this is inclusive. You wanna make sure it finishes what you, what you wanna do. So it was that. He felt that you should really not cut it too close, that you wanna wait until he gets his numbers. And if you look at the bond ordinance itself, it talks about, on page two of the ordinance, it says that the, what's being funded is the unfunded actuarial liability, and that's being determined by Lauter, Bakken, and Amen. So it's, it's really just a, there's flexibility in there. It still is going to do the idea of enough, borrowing enough to fill up what you have owed under the police and fire pensions. It takes care of any costs of the bond issue. And it also, though, adds the idea of perhaps a, is a placekeeper in there for a small reserve. What we found in other instances is it's helpful to have a small reserve to help level off any kind of tax rate, or, you know, if you have a good year, you put some extra money into the reserve. If you have a difficult year, instead of having to collect taxes, you have the money in reserve. So, but that's, but it's really all about flexibility there. And that's really why it jumped. I thought after we left, you know, the 48, 50 number was good, but he wanted to have a higher number in there. So the bond ordinance is not to exceed $55 million. It is a delegated sale ordinance, so it authorizes, if the council passes it in its meeting or whatever, it would authorize the mayor and finance director to proceed with the bond issue. Doesn't have to come back to council. It is a dollar, it does not have the structure in there. You recall that there's been several structures talked about, and I think everybody concluded that the, that the option C from last time was the option you wanted, but that's not dictated in here. And that's, and so there's, again, there's flexibility. Should there be some additional change in sentiment on the council's thought process, that would be where it would take care of it. There's a maximum interest rate in there of 6%. Given the way interest rates are today, you know, that's just, it's never gonna happen. But again, you're delegating authority, so you have to make sure you don't delegate too broadly. Bond council wants it to be very narrow. So there's a maximum interest rate, a maximum year. We expect these are gonna match up with your pension obligation today, which is out to 2040. This ends on January 1st, 2041. Probably that last year would not be used, but it could be. There's an annual levy in there, because of course, that's, that's how these get paid back, with the idea that you would then abate the levy with all these other revenues, as was discussed at the last couple of meetings, that you would use in lieu of the property taxes to pay this. There's, there's information in there about early redemption of the bonds, there's registration of the bonds, there's a bond form. It's all pretty much boilerplate. On page 23 of the bond ordinance, it says these are general obligations of the city. That's what we've all been talking about all along. Page 25 is where it talks about that the bonds can be sold by the designated officials, who are defined earlier. And then on page 27, it talks about how the money is used. The UAAL is funded, the rate stabilization account, if you want one, is funded. And it talks about, it gives a good explanation of the rate stabilization account, of how it's used to smooth the earnings and payouts and such on the bond issue. So that's, that's pretty much what the bond ordinance has in it. I'd be pleased to answer any questions about it.
Questions?
Chair.
Alderman McLanahan.
The redemption option, did I read it correctly, that it is pretty broad in favor of the municipality in regards to time, amounts, increments? I think it was like 5,000.
Right. And again, this is setting for certain parameters. So the redemption says it will be dictated in the bond order. The bond order, once the bonds are sold, and they're sold with a certain redemption, and they'll be negotiated, then all the details, the interest rates and everything else, get cleaned up and put into the bond order.
Chair. It's not a question for the advisor, but just, just an observation then. I mean, I don't have a, I don't have a question in regards to the, the sample there. It's, it's very similar to other issues as we've had in the past, so I'm comfortable with the form generally in regards to that. It's just also, and we also talked about the, at what time we need to have a public hearing prior to going forward on this, so what's our timelines, you know, moving forward or not moving forward, but obviously, what's our timeline moving forward in regards to this for hearing, presentation with an ordinance and council? Because obviously, we can't pass anything out of here.
That's correct. We'll have to, if the council places on this council agenda for next week, our first reading, then we can start looking at the timeframe as far as when we're gonna have our hearing and have second reading and go out for, and sell the bonds, because we'll do that as private.
Chair.
Alderman McLanahan.
We've been kicking this around for quite a while in various forms. I mean, I think it's time to either decide whether we wanna do this or not. And the only, the only place to do that further on is at the council level. Obviously, if there's a majority of the council that says we need to make some adjustments or need to tap the brakes in regards to it, we can do so at that, you know, the council meeting, you know, postpone it, or, but I think all of our questions have largely been answered, with the exception of, it seems like every time we meet, some of the, some of the dynamics have changed a little bit. And so what I wanna see is, you know, what is, what would it look like if we get close to or up to that 55 million level? Because you gave us some certain assumptions in regards to here's what our current revenue is that's going towards this, and here's where a shortfall would be. You presented it as a proposal of, here's what it would look like if it was put on property taxes alone. I guess the additional question that I'd have for you down the road is, you know, what are our other options outside of putting it on property taxes if we go forward? What are the other ways that we would meet the shortfall between what we're currently contributing to pensions and what would be our obligations under normal operating costs and debt service under this proposal at or near the $55 million level? Are those all things, Hannah Tribukas, you think you could have for us by next week?
Yes, we'll put together.
Okay.
No other questions or comments?
So Chair, I guess we would need to move this topic to, or move a request that'd be on the next council meeting, correct?
Yes.
If there, if there is such a motion or any second.
Chair, I'll entertain a motion.
Chair. Oh, excuse me. My question is to Alderman McLanahan. Are you asking this to be put forward with the additional information from City Manager Bucus?
Yes. I mean, I'd like to see it, you know, in form here with that additional information.
An option format, or are you looking for this just to be as a, as a whole pushed forward?
Well, the, Chair. All right. The ordinance, I mean, is what it is in regards to the ordinance as a whole, but as part of our consideration of that ordinance next week, I'd like to have that additional information for discussion purposes.
Is that a motion, sir?
Sure. I'll move to, I'll move to have the sample ordinance on next council meeting's agenda, and also have a request for that supplemental information from Director Bucus.
I will second that, because I've received the understanding now. What I'm saying.
We've got a motion by Alderman McLanahan, seconded by Alderman Bradshaw. Move this onto the regularly scheduled meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. All right. Moving on to public comments. Any public comments? Tommy.
Joey Miller, I just got back from Joe's Pizza. We had pizza and pop.
Well, that's good to hear.
And Matt, did you know they waste money for the, for that thing at Rockford Park that had a pole punch?
Really?
Yep.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Parker, seconded by Ross. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Have a good night.